Okay, we have the public testimonies part of tonight. What we're going to be doing tonight at this point is taking testimony, testimony only, about the compressor station applications, the four of them, from Williams Partners. We're not going to be answering any questions, us or Williams, so please limit your testimony to just that, testimony, and about these particular applications only. Not about incidents in the past, to these applications only. Everyone's going to have five minutes to testify. I'll give you sort of a 30-second warning that you must wrap it up, and then after that, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, so try and make your point as quick as possible. We'll just ask you to come up to the podium again and say and spell your name so the stenographer has what he's looking for, okay? Okay, our first speaker tonight, I'll go down through the list again, is if you want to offer testimony, Lawrence O'Reilly. Okay, how about Bob Narromore? He may have left, okay. Tammy Manning?
Great.
Right now for testimony, it's your chance, five minutes.
Oh, is the sun...
Yeah, you could pull it up if you want, just pull it out of there. It's not, you can just use this one.
All right, um, I've never given testimony. I live approximately two to three miles from where one of the compressor stations is going to be, the one on Liberty, corner of Liberty Park Road and Liberty Township and Route 29. And I have small children in our home, my grandchildren live in our home. We currently have a water buffalo as well as vent stack on our well, and I'm concerned very much about the emissions that are going to be now in our area. My grandchildren go to the park at Liberty Park, which is very close to the compressor station that's going to be put in there. There is also a trailer park right in the backyard of this compressor station. My daughter has friends in this trailer park. She was taking my grandchildren there to bathe when we were having the problems with the water before we got our water buffalo. So I'm very concerned being this close to the compressor station about the emissions. We've had the bad wet water situation, and now we're very concerned about the air quality as well in our area. We're very early on in purchasing our home, so we have no choice but to stay there, and we're going to be there for at least 15 years. So I would like to see at least stricter regulations than I've seen in the past with the gas companies, if that is possible, you know, as strict as could be possible. I guess that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker we have is Vera Scroggins.
Is this the same mic that we had before?
A different one, you want this one?
Yeah, I like it better, yeah. I'd like to say that I wanted to make clear that these compressor stations are just the beginning. When I first went to court against Laser Pipeline, I was an intervener with other citizens, and that was, I guess, 2010, I mean, trying to remember, but Laser told us along that 21-mile stretch through the northern part of our county, there would be no compressor stations. I asked them that several times. So now that Williams took over, now we're hearing about four. This is just the beginning, because now in Dimmock and Springville, we have two compressor stations within about three miles, and they're putting in another one within a mile, so you're talking three. The one that's in Dimmock that blew and had the fire, March 29th, has, I believe, seven compressors. These are two, so they're smaller, but they can be added on, as you heard, as I heard from the Williams representative, they can be enlarged. They're all near homes, they're all near families. Our whole county is considered unzoned. It's not like living in New Jersey, other areas of our country where you have industrial zones, residential zones. Here, the whole county is an industrial zone. This will be added on every pipeline, every amount of wells that are added, they will need more pipelines, and along each gathering line, there'll be more compressor stations. When I went to the hearings for Laser, they projected about 500 wells just for the northern part of our county, which comprised at that time, along this pipeline, there's six townships. So picture 500 wells, picture compressor stations every two to four miles, and the constant noise and hum. All you have to do, if you need tours, I give tours every week, I'll take you to a compressor station in Button Road in Dimmock, and you can stand right outside of it, and you can listen to the hum, constant hum and noise, and then it makes different sounds too. It's not just a hum and sounds of this particular sound, it makes other sounds too periodically, the sounds change. If you'd like to be next to that, instead of hearing nature and the sounds of nature, then I don't know what to tell you, you could also move to New Jersey and live in Lyndon, New Jersey, where the refineries are. I grew up near Lyndon, New Jersey. The refineries were down the road about a mile away, and I had trouble breathing as a kid, because we had to, the air would even change color at some point, and they would tell you to go indoors, like they do in Los Angeles. They give you, I'd like to have a monitoring system, the DEP to develop in Williams, so when the ambient air is too high, sound the alarm, so that we can run back in our homes if that helps, and then maybe you can turn on your air purifiers, your air conditioning, shut your windows, and you can try and breathe, and maybe you could put an oxygen tank on also and get some extra oxygen, some pure oxygen. I had to run in as a child, and the air turned green in Elizabeth, New Jersey, on the border of Lyndon, and we couldn't breathe. So we still carry that. In those days, we didn't know about asthma. You know, 60 years ago, we didn't hear about asthma, lung disease, we didn't know too much about that. We didn't go to doctors hardly, we didn't get tested, so we are exposed to all that. They didn't talk much about pollutants and ambient air and monitoring. So we're going to have all of this in this county, and I consider it actually, they're talking about tons, VOCs, volatile organic compounds, 10 tons are allowed per year. Nitrous oxides, 18 tons per station allowed, tons into the atmosphere. Formaldehyde is allowed, methane, and also hazardous and formaldehyde. So they're talking tons for everything. Now, I would like to say that I consider all of this criminal, a crime against us humans who want to live and have health and to have clean air, clean water. I consider all of this allowing of what's happening criminal on your parts and the higher-ups who have allowed this, starting with the governor of our state, and starting also with the president of our country who's allowing this. 25 counties are being impacted in our state alone. These are agricultural rural counties. This is where our milk, our dairy, our food is coming from.
Vera, you have 30 seconds.
So I would like to say that I hope some of you can be whistleblowers at some point, come forward and let the people know, you'll be protected hopefully, let them know what you're allowing and you're being restrained right now by our government, so that you can't truly protect us. I don't feel truly protected. This is being done to us, and we're being, we need to stand up to it, stand up for it if you really want to have what you want. And those who don't, then have what you have, you deserve what you get. You will have Lyndon, New Jersey, Elizabeth, New Jersey here, and you will breathe it and smell it and hear it, and see if you're going to live here.
Time's up, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Jim Barber. Mr. Barber, can you come over here, please? It's just that, it's not friggin' hearing better. Thank you, sir.
My name is Jim Barber, and we have Barber Farms on Snake Creek Road. The Snake Creek compressor station is sitting in our field. We're watching it be built there. Any questions that I have, I ask the people that are doing it, I've been monitoring that. I was there today, asked some questions, and I love our land, I love our farm, and but we are part of a process. And I would like to say this, that when it comes to the gas that we have in our area, most of the compressor station studies have been done at compressor stations where there is sour wet gas. We're fortunate in our area to have the cleanest gas that's been found, and dry sweet gas. Very little needs to be done to it to get it to market, and as such, there is less potential for pollutants just because of the nature of the cleanness of the gas. I understand that we're using best available technologies, Quad J is the level of emissions containment in a compressor station, and in such...
Go ahead, continue.
As such, these motors that are running these compressors are incredibly clean. There's been a number of studies done on diesel motors, one among many by the California Energy Commission, saying that changing from diesel to compressed natural gas reduces greenhouse gases emitted by 21 to 26 percent. If you put on an oxygenated catalyst, which these compressor stations are, the particulate matter emitted is non-detectable. It's been talked about having a cumulative effect here. Now, I'm a farmer. I was told not long ago that cows produced methane, and that's why we had global warming. I would say, if we're looking at a cumulative effect, there's a lot less cows in Liberty Township now than there used to be. So we certainly have some room for some extra methane, if you would. Now, with that said, let's talk about the cumulative effect here a little bit. If these couple motors in our compressor station, the Snake Creek compressor station, are compressing gases, gas that goes to market, perhaps those two motors can get gas to market that might change 1,000 diesel trucks, or more, to natural gas. And I think that's where we're headed, when we're looking at the cost of fuel. If we can get away from the diesel motors and use by far less compressed natural gas, and in that, we have 21 to 26 percent less greenhouse gases emitted, if we have non-detectable particulate matter, because we're running compressed natural gas in our vehicles, then there's a cumulative effect, but it's a positive cumulative effect. These couple compressor stations, yeah, that might affect our neighborhood in a slight way, but look at the bigger picture. Getting gas to market that can change our country and change the cumulative effect in our country, not only with the vehicles on the road, but also with our homes. If we can convert our homes from burning coal or burning oil and burn natural gas, we have another positive in cumulative effect. The emissions all around are going to be lessened.
You have 30 seconds, sir.
So I would share those things. I think we're in a good situation. Am I concerned about the air at my farm? I'm not. And I'm glad to be a part of the process. Being able to get a product that we have in the ground here, and I would say that this industry has been wonderful for our farmers who have struggled to survive.
Your time's up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Grimsley.
My name is Jim Grimsley. I live on Route 29 in South Dimmock, on the south end of Dimmock. I'm not too far from the Lathrip Station. I'm going to tell you right now, I don't hear it. Yes, I did hear it when it blew, big deal. I've heard 100 sticks of dynamite go off in a quarry not too far from me, too, and I hear that more than I hear the Lathrip Station go off. As far as any pollution, or someone mentioned before about having a metallic taste on their tongue, I don't have it. And I'm out every day outside, and I will have, anybody that would like to is invited to my house, I got the gray house, I'm 20 feet off of 29 with the smiley face on the garage. Vera knows where I live, she's been there. She's been sneaking around on my property quite a few times, so she knows right where it is. You can all come over, and we'll all stand outside, and you'll all tell me if you hear it. And what you might hear, Jake breaks on the trucks, because they're certainly a lot louder than that station is, and I'd be willing to bet there are a lot more pollutants in the air than that station is. And as far as that gentleman that just sat down talking about, he did mention California. Camp Pendleton, California, I would say 20 years ago, roughly 20 years ago, because I know somebody that was very involved in it, changed over their vehicles to compressed natural gas. That's their base vehicles, not combat vehicles, but all their buses and trucks that ran on the base. And California, as we well know, you may see a whole lot of smog around out there, but when it comes to air pollution, you don't sneak nothing by on them, because they'll make you look sick when they'll take your car and just take it apart on emissions. So I would go pretty much by that standard. As far as the safety end of it, I think it's much more safer than most things around, where you got railroad trains going by, not right here in our community, but you got railroad cars that go by with 100 carloads of propane on them, and every chemical that you can name in the world. Nobody seems to say anything about them, but you sure do read about them when one of them goes off that track. So as far as I'm concerned, I think it's the way to go, and it is, for the time being or for the next 50 years, and I use that as the time being, I don't think we're going to come up with anything better than natural gas. And if we do, we'll be fine, but I don't think we're going to see it. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Gloria DiGirolamo, I hope I'm pronouncing that correct. Thank you.
I want to thank the gas industry for the economic earthen my way to the, something our government's never done for us. I support this application for compressor station approval. The proposed facilities will provide much-needed infrastructure for the economic development of our area. The science also indicates it can be done safely without negative impacts on our air quality or natural environment. The Clean Air Council out of Philadelphia, a region where the air quality is not so good compared to ours, seems determined to stick their nose in our business. The council routinely opposes every compressor station under circumstance, even though they certainly have much bigger fish to fry closer to home. This suggests the council's mission is less about clean air than stopping natural gas development. The council makes much of something called the aggregation rule. This rule effectively combines permit applications when they are for nearby facilities. It assumes the combined impact will be magnified, and therefore proposes everything will be considered in the aggregate. The council obviously wants to combine as many applications into one as possible, so the emission levels are more likely to exceed some arbitrary standard and can be denied. Your agency, the DEP, has applied common sense to this rule to recognize emissions are quickly dispersed as one moves away from a site, establishing a one-quarter-mile threshold for evaluating impacts on a case-by-case basis. That approach makes sense. The Clean Air Council, however, would recognize no distance at which aggregation rules would not apply. Instead, it would rely upon vague and undefined factors of dependence and interconnectivity, which can be endlessly abused without regard to the actual impact on air quality, and that should be the issue. Longer pipelines and larger systems will by nature have more dependence and interconnectivity, yet this has no bearing on what really happens to air quality. This should be obvious. The one-quarter-mile threshold, by contrast, allows for consideration of air quality within the area likely to be actually impacted by a given facility. It also allows decisions to be made without enmeshing applicants in an endless process and puts the focus squarely on reducing emissions. There is much progress on the front. Just this week, reports were released indicating air quality in northeastern Pennsylvania has been improving, not suffering. The American Lung Association State of the Air Report, in fact, gave grades of F to Philadelphia and virtually every county surrounding it, but a C to counties such as Green and nearby Tioga, where there is extensive natural gas development. This should be telling us something. There is also several practical factors that ought to be considered. First, linking together facilities that are too far apart ignores the differences in air quality in between. It raises everything to the highest common denominator and invites abuse by those opposed to the development. Secondly, what is the point of aggregating facilities when the emission standard requires meeting ambient air quality at the property line? Isn't that far more important? Shouldn't the aggregation factor only apply to the extent it affects this? Finally, it's very clear, the one-quarter-mile threshold encourages smaller facilities. Aggregation on the scale the council wants would remove those incentives and lead to larger facilities and more concentration of emissions. I support the application before all these reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Tom Sobisky? Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Bill Ferrulo.
I spoke...
Oh, you did? Okay, thank you so much. Joyce Stone.
Joyce Stone, right there.
I'm sorry, did... No, you can sit over here, over here.
I think the Clean Air Council has a comment that he's trying to say back here.
Okay. Okay, all right. We'll get to, we will get to him, we will get to him. Okay, he wasn't on the list. Matt, you want to...
Yeah.
Absolutely, okay. Go ahead, ma'am, go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Joyce Stone. I was the former naturalist at the Woodborne Preserve, and I've been involved with environmental problems in the county for 37 years. These are my comments dealing with the compressor stations in general. I believe the DEP should restore the local conservation district's former authority and oversight of the gas drilling industry, including the placement of the compressor stations and pipelines, to better protect the state's waters and wetlands and to prevent soil erosion. Some public agency must have oversight over the proposed and existing compressor stations, and they are accompanying safety issues in order to protect the public. Either DEP needs to expand its role beyond currently regulating air contamination sources and air pollution control devices, and/or the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission's jurisdiction must encompass rural areas. These remarks are in regard to comments that DEP said last week about their role. I believe that the OSHA guidelines for employee safety must be made stricter for the gas industry. How many of the accidents that have occurred in our area in the past few years, and perhaps at the Lathrip compressor plant, are due to worker fatigue from performing dangerous work for too many long hours and days without adequate rest? After the states have worked tirelessly for over 30 years to reduce sulfur dioxide and nitrogen oxides coming from coal-burning power plants to eliminate acid rain, and Pennsylvania had the highest acid rain concentrations in the country, we are now allowing companies like Williams to dump all these harmful pollutants back into our atmosphere. Just these four compressor stations alone will release 43 tons of VOCs, volatile organic compounds, 72 tons of nitrous oxides, 137,000 tons of methane and carbon dioxide, and over a ton of formaldehyde. DEP has to require better technologies to significantly reduce these unacceptable levels of pollution to our air. All the gas companies in the state should be required to meet EPA's natural gas STAR program standards, including companies such as Williams. With hundreds of these compressor stations planned to be built in Pennsylvania, the DEP has to have a grip on the cumulative air emissions and place a ceiling on these highly polluting emissions, just as it has for coal-burning power plants. A new University of Colorado at Boulder study shows the strongest evidence yet that noise from natural gas well compressors negatively influences nesting bird populations in the area. It is not surprising that the variety of bird species declines around compressor stations because their hearing is much more sensitive than ours. Barn owls, for example, can locate and catch small mammals in complete darkness using only their hearing, but could they hear that white-footed mouse run across a leaf near a noisy compressor station? Better noise control using sound-reducing walls on the stations should be required to help all our animal communities, including man.
Ma'am, you have 30 seconds.
Lastly, Governor Corbett, who calls many of the shots for the DEP's control of the gas industry, has yet to display any genuine concern or understanding of the effects of gas drilling on our public health and on our environment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I have Rebecca Roder next, I'm going to, Matt, do you want to go, and then Rebecca? Okay, Rebecca.
My name is Rebecca Roder, and I have lived in Brooklyn Township, Susquehanna County, since 1986. DEP is a regulatory body whose purpose is to balance risks to our health and environment with commercial development of the Commonwealth's resources. We learned from the recent Williams-owned operated Lathrip compressor explosion that although DEP issues operating permits for compressors, no one has jurisdiction in our county, a Class 1 rural one, for our safety around pipelines and compressors. Our state owes us regulations to provide for our safety in Class 1 rural areas. Similarly, DEP issues air quality permits for every compressor to emit tons per year of air pollution with known risks to our health, yet there are no state or federal regulations to monitor the cumulative risks and effects on the health of those of us living around these compressors. I think our state owes us regulations to monitor our breathing air quality and to keep track of our health complaints in trail corridors. The only study to date about air emissions from well pads during the installation and finishing of wells was done by scientists at the University of Colorado. That study found high levels of short-term air pollutants cause significant health risks for people living half a mile from the well pad. Do we have to wait for a university to study air emissions for compressors when DEP already knows it permits what it identifies as hazardous air pollutants, volatile organic compounds, ground ozone precursors, formaldehydes, et cetera, by tons per year for each compressor? DEP and the compressor operators are not being good neighbors by dumping tons per year of air emissions with known human health effects without providing regulations to protect our health. Drillers are required to do baseline water testing on water wells 25 hundred feet from the well pad before drilling. Why can't compressor operators be required by DEP to provide baseline air testing with Suma canisters and an appropriate setback for nearby residences before the compressors are built and in operation? And just like well water, if somebody living close to a compressor smells bad odors, gets nosebleeds, headaches, et cetera, DEP and the compressor operator can come out and do Suma air canister testing. Why doesn't DEP have the same protocol for the air around compressors as they do for water wells around gas wells, especially when DEP knows they are permitting air emissions for compressors that are not good for us to breathe? Is the air we breathe less important to the DEP than the water we drink? We are here tonight because the plan approval permit for these compressors provide for public comment and participation. I have a Williams compressor being built on my road at the moment, the Central HP compressor, which was permitted with a GP5 permit. GP5 permits are used for minor source air emissions and do not provide for any public participation. DEP right now is moving to allow all state-regulated compressors to be permitted by GP5s, taking our voice away. I suspect the Central HP compressor may be the southernmost gathering point for the Cabot-Williams Constitution Pipeline, a 36-inch transmission line which will most definitely not be a minor source emission. I understand anecdotally from some of my neighbors, they've already signed right aways for the Constitution Pipeline. This transmission line ultimately will be a federally regulated interstate line... This transmission line ultimately will be a federally regulated interstate line because it will be a major source of air pollution. I want to know if Williams plans to apply for an aggregate permit for the whole project with FERC, or if they're going to permit individual parts piecemeal at the state level, thereby avoiding stricter federal standards and aggregate rules. I ask Williams to be a good neighbor, provide transparency in permitting, and do baseline Suma canister testing on our breathing air before you pollute. I ask DEP require Williams and all compressor operators to do baseline air testing in communities as part of the permit process, and do not take our voices away with a covert GP5 permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Frank Finan. Thank you. After the hearing, if anybody wants to leave a copy of their testimony, they can. We'll take it. If not...
Hello, I am Frank Finan. Last month, there was incident in Springfield. Apparently, the Lathrop compressor had unexpected release of fire, smoke, and sheet metal that resulted in unscheduled disassembly of the building. Williams stated that soon after the event, they evaluated the air on-site with handheld monitors. I asked for manufacturer and model number of instrument they used. They got the answer today via email. Thank you, Helen, you're out there somewhere. It's very similar to this here. This here is Honeywell for gas detector. This is what they used. It's a different brand, same item. This is the lowest-tech piece of equipment I have, and they use that on the sites. These are designed to monitor gases in confined areas only. It's not for use outdoors. The only difference between the Honeywell and the RKI that they used is that they have internal pump. They could suck air 40 feet out of the building. This, I would have to add my little external pump to suck the air out. I either own or have access to the correct equipment to monitor the site correctly and safely. You know the question I'd like to ask. I asked it twice before, previous hearings, and I respect your request. I won't ask it again. I do want to get on-site.
Thank you. We have Mr. Howard Hannum.
Howard Hannum, H-A-N-N-U-M, and I am a downwind resident of a nearby community. I'm a small farmer from Sydney Center, New York, which is approximately 51 miles from here and more within the jet stream, the downwind jet stream, than Scranton, Pennsylvania. And certainly in the downwind jet stream of Susquehanna, PA. In the wake of the explosion that took place on March 29th, and considering the party involved in this permit application, I think the DEP needs to rethink its position and policy on permitting this site for Williams Cabot. With numerous accidents and a record of showing blatant disregard for PUC and DEP assessments and a track record of disregarding regulated authority in Susquehanna County is not ready for another Williams Cabot compressor station. If the DEP plans to move forward with this application, I would like to see implemented a more strict policy along the same lines as the April 17th EPA updated Clean Air Compliance for all future Marcellus shale drilling and use the guidelines for this site and all future Williams sites. The DEP needs to demand an aggregate environmental cumulative impact assessment. The public would like to see a new SOP for on-site maintenance. The public would also like to feel assured that a revamped SOP and training policy is in place for all on-site employees in regard to accidents. While one piece of equipment may come in under the limit for HAP and VOCs and greenhouse gases, it's the cumulative effect of all the pieces that is bringing harm to our infants and seniors. Mannings and Hadlix already have very high methane numbers, and when you add in Kane Road, Teal, Vifrock, White, Central, Corbin, and Zick, you have a toxic mix that is just unacceptable with downwind residents. Please bring the air quality standards up to 2008. Please move the hardline on equipment placement to three-quarters of a mile. Please add more inspections to this site. Please add a training and a thorough SOP for any off-site employees that may have emergency access in the absence of regulars. And finally, a good neighbor policy would be to curtail all permitting on this site being requested by Williams Cabot until a thorough review of all the reports and inspections has taken place. The public would also request that a panel or a committee be started with local citizens represented for the decision-making process in any Williams Cabot laser gathering in Susquehanna County. You have allowed Williams to have free rein across northern Pennsylvania at the public's expense with pipelines that leak and well casings that crack and house compressor stations that explode. Williams has been a disaster. We have seen methane migration ruining the drinking water of countless families, and the DEP's response seems to be the same every time. No response, nothing. As a downwind resident just across the state line in New York, we are breathing in just as much and sometimes more of Williams emissions. Susquehanna County has the second-most permitted wells in Pennsylvania, second only to Bradford County, which is right next door. There is more greenhouse gas in northern Pennsylvania than Benhamton and Syracuse combined, according to a study at Cornell and Penn State. Williams is the number-one representative for that statistic. Please show a good neighbor policy and delay the permitting on this application until Williams promises to conform to the stricter regulations that are being proposed here tonight.
Dale G. Webster.
As you can see, I don't have any prepared statements.
Sir, could you pick up the microphone just a second? The red one, yeah, the red. There you go.
I don't have any prepared statements. Jim Barber took out most of the points that I had. Anyone that's lived here longer, my family's been here eight generations, we've had a farm. The economics of Susquehanna County have been difficult at times. The gas development, in my opinion, is a good thing. We want to monitor all the regulatory things like DEP has done, and we want to basically not let the environment become the only issue. We want to be cognizant of the environment, but we also want the development to go forward. And I do think that the DEP has done an excellent job of monitoring all the things that have been brought to light tonight here. I don't know exactly the details people have about it, but I've seen it as a good boon for our economy, and I support the compressor stations for everybody. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. I have a name here, Julia Gaines. Do you want to speak again, or did you just have a question? Julia Gaines?
She's not.
Okay, all righty. Barbara Clifford.
I'm speaking for the... I'm speaking for the League of Women Voters for Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
The Abbott and Costello routine, who's on first about baseball, mirrors the questions that the League of Women Voters of Pennsylvania...
Can you hear you?
Can you just hold the microphone a little closer to your mouth? There you go.
...mirrors the questions that the League of Women Voters of Pennsylvania and perhaps others have experienced as we continue to examine natural gas operations in the Commonwealth. As a member of the League of Women Voters of Susquehanna County, I speak on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Pennsylvania. We are most appreciative of your efforts to come to our community and hear our concerns regarding compressor stations. As you may be aware, the League of Women Voters of Pennsylvania conducted a statewide study on the extraction of natural gas from Marcellus shale and has adopted a position statement from which we advocate. We further have conducted addendum studies on pipelines and pooling with related positions. We previously have addressed our concerns regarding air quality and cumulative impacts related to permitting compressor stations. This evening, we would like to reinforce our position with you and raise questions in light of recent events in Susquehanna County. As a League, we support the maximum protection of public health and the environment in all aspects of Marcellus shale natural gas production, site restoration, and delivery to the customer by requiring the use of best practices and promoting comprehensive regulation, communication, and adequate staffing across government agencies. Who is responsible for our safety and follow-up investigation if a compressor station in rural designated Class 1 areas with relatively few people explodes? Where are the comprehensive regulations, coordinated communication, and the well-trained personnel needed to fulfill your mission as the Department of Environmental Protection? Charge to reduce air pollution, make sure our water is safe to drink, and protect the water quality in our rivers and streams. When, where, and how does the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission and the U.S. Department of Transportation Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration get into the safety of compressor station gain? The League supports enforcement of regulations for all natural gas pipelines that demonstrates standardization, best practices, and costly penalties that encourage compliance and fines consistent with the nature of violation. What are the standards, rules, and best practices for compressors that are applicable to Class 1 areas like this? What appropriate fines are imposed when an explosion occurs, as in the case of Lathrop? What difference will meaningful penalties make to those responsible to ensure that they will do the right thing in the future? The League supports measures to insulate regulatory agencies from political influences and other considerations provided by the natural gas companies that they are authorized to regulate. Is there a conflict of interest between those who are being asked to safeguard the public while their funding depends on permitting fees for natural gas operations that may in turn threaten public health and the environment? Are there potential ethical concerns raised between the financial contributions of the deep drillers with deep pockets and those whose campaigns they support? We stand with the League of Women Voters of the United States in promoting an open government system that is representative, accountable, and responsive. Why are the lives of residents of rural Pennsylvania less worthy of oversight and protection from compressor stations than other citizens in more populated areas of the Commonwealth? Why are emergency responders and citizens near compressor stations left in the dark regarding the nature and composition of the air emissions they were subjected to in the recent explosion? Why are integrity management plans of pipeline operators not subject to the right-to-know law? Why are the Pipeline Informed Planning Alliance, PIPA, guidelines not being used to make risk-informed decisions about the location of pipelines and their related facilities in Pennsylvania? Unlike the Abbott and Costello routine, the permitting of compressor stations is not a laughing matter. If safety considerations are overlooked, it is a game that will leave all of us losers. The League of Women Voters implores the DEP to stop the routine permitting of facilities, pause to ponder the questions raised, seek answers, and passionately pursue your mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, ma'am, if you want, in the yellow there, do you want to go and speak, and then we'll get to Matt Walker, who said he would go first. Here, put it right there. Thank you. Just say and state your name before you're from.
My name is Olga Benz. I live in Dimmock. I just want to tell you, you are greatly appreciated. We are blessed that the gas company is in this area. They created thousands of jobs, they're paying royalties, and they're really improving taking care of their roads. So there are so many negative comments I hear today, but also positive. So it was outrageous that this lady called you criminals, don't pay any attention, just do the good job. And when we're working, even in the kitchen, we can have accident, they can have accident in factories, in mines. There is not, that is done deliberately, but things happen, and you're taking care of it. So thank you, and continue to do a good job.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone who wanted to speak that didn't get a chance? Okay, let's go with Matt Walker. Okay, Matt, you're going to hold up the end. Ma'am, go ahead if you'd like to speak. We'll take people who haven't signed up. We can move this along. Ma'am, if you could just say and spell your name, please.
Will you give me a second, please?
Sure, sure.
My name is Rose Borth, B-A-R-T-H. My husband Donald and I have lived at Watcher's Corners just outside Montrose since 1985. He has been 100% totally disabled since the beginning of 1979. When we built our house in 1983, we took his disability into careful consideration. He wanted to be away, he wanted privacy and easy house accessibility. We built our house over 1,800 feet back from the road. The expense involved adding electric in a driveway that long was great, but we had the privacy, peace, and quiet we wanted, and the air didn't smell like exhaust. You could sit on the back deck in your PJs and smell the flowers that bloomed in season. Blackberry flowers smelled just like someone was baking a pie. Unfortunately, a quarry was within 2,500 square, 2,500 feet to the east and behind us, perfect spot for a gas swell, a gas line, and a compressor station. That we will now be able to see from our front deck. It's about 1,000 to 1,500 feet from the front deck. The struggle we are having now for us to find a replacement house elsewhere because they are not even remotely handicapped, soundproof, and private. The outlook for my husband is wheelchair-bound. Try and get a wheelchair upstairs and then to the bathroom if the house wasn't planned for that wheelchair. We are 75 and 79 years old. I don't seem to have the energy to pack, move, and try to start over when we have our perfect ideal location, or had. Now, our morning ritual is to run the water, check the smell, the color, the TDS, and then taste it. Not many home buyers are enthusiastic about a compressor station that they can see within sight of the front door because they will smell it, they will see it, and they will hear it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, okay. Is there anyone else? Can I have a down? Ma'am, can I come down? Yeah, in the gray, and then the lady in the red will be given your opportunity.
I'll be quick.
Just say and spell your name.
Okay.
Hi, Gretchen Bakker, B-A-C-K-E-R. I support the application of the compressor station. My husband and I have lived in Dimmock for seven years. We since have moved to Montrose, but we still own the house in Dimmock. I served as an Army helicopter pilot, and I'm coming at this from those experiences. Becoming energy self-sufficient needs to be every American's goal. Unless you pedaled here or rode a horse, which also emits emissions, you need to become an advocate of this and learn to come and meet in the middle. Generations, two points, generations have left Susquehanna County because after graduation, they can't find jobs. We are losing our children to this. My viewpoint has changed. Five months ago, we had a daughter. I am thrilled that the natural gas industry has moved into this area, and possibly my daughter will find a job and stay here and have dinner with me every night instead of having to go to a big city and move out of the area. Finally, I'll make another point because I know I wasn't on the list, but most of all, we have to meet in the middle and find a solution. Natural gas is a great opportunity for us to become self-sufficient. I would much rather listen to 50 decibels in my backyard than attend a funeral from one of my old soldiers or one of my classmates from West Point because they are defending our concentrations and every... I'm sorry, I get emotional about this, but I have attended funerals of soldiers that have fought in Afghanistan because they were defending our concerns in energy. Please look for... I would much rather listen to 50 decibels in my backyard than attend a funeral from one of my old soldiers or one of my classmates from West Point because they are defending our concentrations and every... I'm sorry, I get emotional about this, but I have attended funerals of soldiers that have fought in Afghanistan because they were defending our concerns in energy. Please look for a middle ground on this and explore natural gas. Thank you.
Lady in the red, back there?
I'm Kelly Finnan. My name is Kelly Finnan, and I was born and raised in Hop Bottom, PA, about 20 miles, more or less, from the proposed compressor stations. I have two concerns regarding these compressor stations. The first is lack of safety oversight. The second is the negative reputation that Williams, formerly Laser Northeast, has developed in this area. As many of us are painfully aware, the Lathrop compressor station, operated by Williams, just a few miles from my home, exploded less than a month ago. To make matters worse, there's ongoing debate about whom, if anyone, is in charge of regulating and investigating violations of gas safety rules in these situations. In this case, an agent from the Public Utility Commission announced that she could not investigate the explosion because stations in rural areas are not within her jurisdiction. In addition, a series of articles in the Philadelphia Inquirer found that, quote, "This gap, coupled with a slow response from Pennsylvania, meant that hundreds of miles of high-pressure pipelines had been built with no safety oversight," end quote. I'm aware that the DEP is conducting its own investigation in this case, but I would like to point out that the DEP does not usually enforce gas safety regulations and is possibly ill-equipped at the moment to do so. Basically, although the Public Utility Commission is developing and enforcing safety rules for compressor stations, rural compressor stations, also known as Class 1 compressor stations, are exempt from these rules and therefore receive no safety oversight. I would also like to bring attention to the fact that Williams blatantly disregarded the Department of Environmental Protection's request that it not restart the compressor station without the DEP's permission. The compressor station resumed operations just two days after the explosion, ignoring these clear orders from the DEP. Williams is a bad neighbor. A company that will operate its compressor stations without safety regulations or permission from the DEP both puts its workers and NEPA residents in danger. In an ideal world, for a variety of reasons, I would like to veer away from natural gas as a source of energy and focus on renewables instead. However, in the real world, I know that it's unlikely that the DEP will kick Williams out of the state, so I would just like to implore the DEP to stop handing out compressor station permits like candy. I would love to see the completion of these compressor stations delayed until the Public Utility Commission establishes rules for regulating the safety of Class 1 rural compressor stations. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, over here, sure. You, yeah, you, you're pointing at you, sure. Just say and spell your name, please.
My name is Nancy Wottrich, W-O-T-T-R-I-C-H. I'm from New Milford. Thanks for being here. I want to thank you for this opportunity tonight, but I'm not here to give technical testimony on these four proposed compressor stations. There are others here tonight who are much better qualified and have already addressed these points and very well. I came here tonight, though, to express a more personal aspect of this controversy to you. I'm here as a 10-year resident of Susquehanna County, whose life is being negatively impacted by the careless expansion and profit-driven ploys of this industry: bartering for less regulation, less restrictions, fewer protective measures, less accountability. I'm frustrated that I even have to be here tonight. I would much rather be home with my family than standing here trying to appeal to you, the regulatory agency charged with protecting the well-being of the Pennsylvania environment and its citizens, to protect my health and well-being from the dangers of this industry's expansion. But sadly, that's what this has been reduced to: the citizens pleading with the state to act on our concerns, to remove loopholes and impose stricter regulations, to protect us from the witches' brew of potential carcinogens that could casually be released into our air and water, and to absolutely prohibit any aspect of this gas extraction process to continue to poison our air, our land, and our water. It should be a given that this regulatory agency requires the gas industry to utilize the highest levels of resource protection and environmentally sound technology, not just those that are less costly for them, in all aspects of their operations. And when these requirements are violated, then there must be full accountability and restitution. This cannot be up for debate or compromise due to political and industry pressure. I'm also here tonight because I'm living scared, like so many others. Last week, I listened to people who live near the Lathrop compressor station express their fear and concern that there is not enough stringent monitoring of emissions and no emergency notification to surrounding residents, no siren that can be sounded in the event of a major accident or venting of noxious, high levels of noxious gases. Given that these stations are permitted to release tons of harmful pollutants into the air, we have no way to know if just breathing the air outside our homes will make us sick. It scares the hell out of me that as the number of compressor stations increases in this county, so will the number of respiratory illnesses and deaths. I have the option not to drink the water from my well if, in the event, it becomes polluted, but I cannot not breathe the air. We're being forced to deal with something much greater than the benign activity it was first sold to us as. Northeastern Pennsylvania, in fact, most of the state, is slowly and methodically being turned into a major industrial zone to support an environmentally intensive and profit-driven industry and at the expense of every aspect of our quality of life. I have to ask myself, if this is progress, then why does it look so much like destruction? And why is it making everyone sick? Therefore, I implore you, if we must be forced to live with an expanding tide of well pads and compressor stations and the assorted invasive infrastructure, then use your authority to strengthen the regulations and require the strictest compliance with them, to require the best technologies, the best and lowest-impact technologies be used in construction and operations. Increase your own monitoring and inspection of these stations and tighten up the loopholes that keep getting larger in the regulations. Don't do away with these public hearings because they are the only avenue that we have to publicly express our concerns. And lastly, protect us as you've been charged to do. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone else that wants to offer testimony?
Hello, thank you for being here again, and I said...
Can you hear me?
Oh, sorry.
We can hear you just...
You can hear me. Lynn Senick, S-E-N-I-C-K. I suppose you must be getting tired of coming up here and listening to us saying the same thing time after time, but I will keep saying it until changes are made. Unfortunately, I may not be able to speak in the future because of the proposed changes in the DEP regulations that will do away with public hearings by including all compressor stations under the G5 permit. Every time I speak, I mention that the current regulations do not address the cumulative impacts of the many compressor stations that will be needed here in Susquehanna County. I wonder how many compressors will be going in along the line as time goes on. I asked this question of the Williams representatives before, and they said that they could not predict the future, but we do know that they need compressors to push gas, and as the gas is depressurized, we will need more and more compression. Industry representatives feel confident enough to predict that the gas will be flowing here for some 50 years or more. We hear this all the time, how much gas there is here. So that means many compressors. I want to know who is going to protect my family from the ill effects of the hazardous air pollutants, of increased hazardous air pollutants, and how will they do this? No one has been able to explain to me how much increased risk we may face during the next 50 years of gas development. Is the risk high? Is it minimal? No one has been able to explain the total expected amounts of hazardous air pollutants from increasing numbers of compressor stations because the DEP does not measure pollutants in the aggregate. As of the last EPA report I could find, in 2005, Susquehanna County had a 0 to 1 level of hazardous air pollutants on a scale of 20. Will this change? How much? We keep moving forward with this development without any benefit to risk assessment. It makes me feel like we are being experimented on. I don't like this. I resent this, and I'm going to keep saying this to you at every opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to offer testimony that hasn't spoken tonight? Spoke today? Okay, Matt, you want to, Matt Walker?
First of all, I wanted to say I heard a couple people booing in the audience and thought that was rude. I don't know if you heard that, Colleen?
I heard it on both sides. Thank you.
I just, I only heard it when a certain...
Okay, thank you.
...woman was talking. Okay, and I want to address a few points that the woman wearing the Drill Baby Drill shirt talked about before. Yeah, I do work with the Clean Air Council, and we are a member-supported organization, which means we have members across the state, so we work on issues that affect the state. We are primarily focused on public health and the environment, anything that affects the lung. So we are interested in, you know, the hazardous air pollutants associated with this industry. We do have members in these regions, and we do have an extensive Philadelphia-based program, and if you are interested in checking that out, I encourage you to visit our website. It's www.cleanair.org, and you can see all the great work we do down there and across the state as well. I also want you to please take what you heard from the Drill Baby Drill woman with a grain of salt, most of which, most of the testimony she offered was inaccurate and misleading. I encourage her and others to read the law and check out our website to learn more about aggregation and air issues. Thank you. Now, I'd like to read my prepared statement, but I'll keep it under five. Combined these four proposed stations, eight engines, and eight dehydrators have the potential to emit tons of harmful pollutants each year into the air we all breathe. Some of these pollutants have been linked with respiratory diseases, neurological issues, and cancer. The council used DEP's EFAX website and found 16 pieces of Williams-owned natural gas equipment, which I have here on a map. I've handed it to the DEP, and I would be glad to show anyone else tonight here who's interested. It includes the four we're discussing here tonight, as well as the Baker compressor Station, the Cobb Hill RFP site, the Holly Station, and the Fraser Station. Many of these stations are only a few miles from each other, are owned by the same company, and appear to be part of the same interdependent system. The three conditions that would require DEP to at least do an aggregation analysis on the sources and perhaps issue a stronger Title V air permit. Even if PADEP were to only aggregate these four proposed stations, they would likely have to issue a Title V permit because the CO2 equivalent would be 136,920 tons per year, well over the 100,000 tons per year threshold. If PADEP were to aggregate the four proposed stations with even just a few additional Williams owned stations, then these stations would likely trip major source thresholds for pollutants such as NOx and VOCs, both of which are precursors to ground-level ozone. Ground-level ozone has been linked with a variety of respiratory diseases and associated, has been associated with cancer, stroke, and premature death. How is PADEP ensured that this facility, in conjunction with others, should not be regulated as a major source of pollution rather than the proposed minor source? The council requests the department perform a thorough and transparent and proper aggregation analysis of all equipment that may be interconnected with other natural gas equipment or face the possibility of having these permits go to the environmental hearing board to be reevaluated. This regional office should be requiring emission limitations that are at least as stringent as those being imposed at similar facilities across the state. For two points of comparison, PADEP has been setting VOC limits at 5.17 tons, whereas this permit allows 10.765 tons, more than double the amount. The public recently heard from the last public hearing in Wyoming County about an engine that could reduce VOC emissions by 99%. And if other engines can reduce emissions by this much, then how could these engines, which reduce VOCs by 57%, be considered best available technology, as DEP and Williams have suggested? How is the department ensuring that these emissions won't exceed the National Ambient Air Quality Standards, or NACT, especially in counties such as this one with no monitors? As DEP established a tipping point or cap at which they will know, at which point they will no longer be able to approve permits for natural gas equipment because air pollution would exceed the NACT, the council requests more specific information on exactly how PADEP is measuring or analyzing projected air emissions at the local and county levels from this facility and others to ensure that the proliferation of natural gas emission sources are not cumulatively degrading air quality. The closest monitor to the site is over 35 miles away, and it's in the wrong direction to monitor ozone, which according to EPA travels in the northeastern direction. The council requests the DEP require Screen 3 modeling prior to issuing these permits in order to demonstrate compliance with the NACT and to determine the maximum concentrations of NOx and formaldehyde that nearby residents would be exposed to. The council encourages the department to perform a review of EPA's Natural Gas Star program, require specific technologies and practices as a cost-effective way to cut methane and other hazardous air emissions. The council also invites Williams to voluntarily participate in this program. The council suggests specifically that the department require emergency shutdown system and purge pressure shutdown controls to be operated in a way that prevents blowdowns of methane into our air. Finally, the council recommends additional emissions testing in accordance with best management practices determined throughout Pennsylvania for similar engines. PADEP North Central Region recently required emissions testing about once every three months for a facility in that region. The council looks forward to hearing your responses to the suggestions you hear tonight. Thank you. And I did just want to add one thing that we at the council, we're not anti-natural gas, we're pro-public health, so please remember that. We're not very radical sounding. If you look at some of the other environmental groups...
You have 30 seconds, ma'am.
Thank you. If you look at some of the other environmental groups in the state, we're, you know, we're pretty reasonable. We're pushing for the best possible available technologies and making sure that DEP, they're trying hard, but we're pushing them to do the best they can do in making sure the gas companies within compliance of the law. That's what we look at. We look at the law, and we push to make that happen. So thank you.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. Is anyone else? Okay, with that said, we're going to end the public hearing part of tonight. I want to remind everyone that the public comment period ends May 10. You can submit written comments up until May 10. Our address is on our website. It's 2 Public Square in Wilkes-Barre, 18703. Okay, we'll adjourn for the evening. Thank you again. Appreciate Williams coming out, and thank you for your time.